Okay, so as it is six o'clock or soon will be in the next half a second, I will start this continuation of our work session from last Monday night. And I will turn it over to Mr. Bransoy or Mr. Minton, whoever would like to start.
The agenda is in front of you, or you can take a look at that and see if you we'll just kind of go through that. Again, this is a work session, so it's not a night when we'll be making decisions like that. It's just for everybody to have an opportunity to share your thoughts and we're putting together so that we can move forward with our facilities. To start out, I'd like to just have Mr. Minton mention a little bit about today. I did send out an email to all of you about COVID today. And so this is a time when we're always worried about what was going to happen. And so so maybe you could just explain a little bit about what today was like and what changes we're making so we can move forward. At this time.
Okay, yeah, so we were contacted today by the state because we've had our number of positive test results come through and we had, we're up to 11 students right now. And they've, it's led to a lot of students quarantining. We've had a couple of the teams have been recommending to their students that they quarantine as well. And so we've got about 140 students quarantined either because they were in direct contact or because they are participating in an extracurricular activity that they want to protect. But that's not the number the state's looking at. They're looking at the number of actual new COVID cases. So they contacted us and said that they were very concerned. Initially, they wanted us to actually go to distance learning pre-K 12. And then after they talked a little bit with their nurse, I believe, they were starting to think, well, we'll just go pre-K through four. Then I talked to them and we kind of worked out a deal where instead of sending kids everybody home, we'll go back to our hybrid model. I pointed out that we've already got a huge number of kids that are they're learning from home as it is. And they were okay with that, provided that we really emphasized that if you're, if you're sick, don't come to school. And if, you know, in doubt, go get tested. So nobody's required to get tested. We can't. We can't require anyone to get tested. So there's no requirement to come to school, but it's, they're just, if a kid is sick, they're highly recommending, go out, get them tested. And so like I say, we know of 11 positive cases right now. We, there's three more that we suspect that for whatever reason, we keep hearing that these people are positive, but for whatever reason, their parents don't want people to know. So we don't know about those. But that's bound to happen. Questions on COVID? We're really at the mercy of what the state tells us we can and can't do. So.
I have a question. So let's say you have these kids that are out. How do you know when they come back that they're clear?
Okay, yeah, we, we know they're clear because when they, first of all, when they're quarantined, our school nurse, Katie Zuckey, goes through all of that. And, and, and she's got a running list of every date imaginable here. So this is the date that it was first reported, if they were sitting in close contact with someone with a positive case in school or on the bus or, or, you know, wherever they were. And then we just go off of those dates. It's, it's not easy, but it's, it takes a lot of time, but she does a good job with it.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, and we'll get started here then. The first item there was just kind of a review of what we talked about last week. The options for the district. And we talked about the co-locate facility with the hospital, which we've done a lot spent a lot of time with them, working on different things. So we, they've talked about that. And we've talked about remodeling, expand Olivia's site. And then we talked about consolidating with neighboring districts. And so those three things, we, I think I kind of brought to probably the options we're looking at or possible that we've put to study too and so forth. And then the last one is, and this is something that has come forward since last week. Questions of ICS and their consulting. And a little over two years ago, we contracted with them to do the consulting, to work with us, is developing a plan. And so Ryan is one that has worked with us and Ryan has outlined the plan that we're presently doing. And then something the people thought that being the referendum did not pass, then ICS is done, that they've completed theirs. And that is not true. The contract we have with them is we're continuing and they will continue. It's it isn't, doesn't stop because of the referendum.
Could you show us where in the contract that states that? Could you show us where in the contract that states that? Because I see no ending.
There is no ending. That's what I mean. They're, they're working with a program to, to develop a successful program.
But there's, it doesn't say that. It says upon when the referendum passed that they would continue, but the referendum failed. And so their contract is pretty much over then.
No, it doesn't. It says, it doesn't say that. This means we can, we'll continue working with them in developing a plan to the point where the board itself could, could ties any time. That's not an issue there. So, but I think the board members, that's a board decision. And so I think that's what we have to look at. And so so that's why I brought it out tonight is because I think the board needs to work with that and work with Ryan. And we've worked with him for over two years now. And I, and I have seen no reason why we wouldn't continue working with the plan. And so.
I guess if I do, I have to say that it's failed, basically. ICS has failed us. They have a fiduciary duty and they failed that fiduciary duty for the taxpayers.
I disagree.
Because they took on the role as owner's representative, program or project manager, facilitator. And when you're, take on all that, you have a fiduciary duty to the community. And you failed that because the, you didn't have the taxpayers, the taxpayers in mind. It put them in jeopardy, the taxpayers in jeopardy, and they voted that down. And that's why they did.
Every decision that was made came from, started with the steering committee to community meetings that the board voted on. Ryan wasn't there saying, this is what you need to do.
But in his contract, it says that. It says that he's the owner's representative, he's the project manager, the facilitator, and he has a fiduciary duty. And you failed that. ICS has failed that. And so I feel that their contract is null and void.
I'm confused because we didn't pass the bond. So you've never, because that to me, isn't that after the bond would pass, then you would take on those roles? I'm confused.
I think maybe, Theresa, you're, you're being very liberal with contract terms when you talk about fiduciary responsibility. It, it does simply come down to, if the board does not want to work with ICS, we are not, we are not going to look at that contract, that piece of paper there and say, no, you have this is a relationship that we build with our districts and want to work with our districts and we want our districts to work with us. So by no means take that as we're holding you in lock with ICS. That's not at all. If the board decides that ICS didn't serve the purpose that they were supposed to serve and does not want to continue the relationship, we just have to be told that that's the case.
So I have a question then, as far as your lump sum that you required. How much have we paid ICS to date? And are you paid up with old schools? Because you were supposed to get $15,000 and then you were supposed to get another $9,750. So I was just wondering, where are we with, with payments for you?
It might, it might show bad business on my end, but I, I don't know. I assume we, we billed the $15,000 probably a couple of years ago when we were done with the assessment.
I remember approving the $15,000.
And then how about the extra $9,750?
I doubt we have.
Was that paid for?
There's been no billing out of that at all.
I don't think my accounting department would know to bill that based on, that's me telling them, okay, we're done with this, let's fill that. And I had not done that. So.
But I do agree with Theresa somewhat. I mean, not that you completely done everything wrong, but I think looking at another perspective in the community right now, I think that's kind of where they're looking. They want another idea, another, some other thoughts, not just ICSs. You know what I mean? I mean,
A consulting service is a consulting service. We need to be consulted on, on this. And I mean, I, I collected a lot of thoughts over the last week. And just going back of our work in the last two years. And it's, it's, it's been a lot of work. It's been incredible. And I just felt it'd be important to just recap some of it. I mean, we started with a strategic plan and followed 2018 and 2019 and January. That's when we had ICS come on board. And they helped facilitate this facility and educational assessment with us for both buildings. From April to June, we had the community steering committee. We had five meetings to go through this entire process of long range planning for facilities. In July of 2019, we had the guidance, it was guided by reclamation of the steering committee. The school board approved a single building solution. In August of 2019, the school board approved moving to a one campus plan in partnership with the hospital. In November of 2019, the voters approved a tenure. That's when our operational levy was passed. In March of 2020, we had experts advise us, the students and staff had to move out of the Burd Island campus to be relocated because of the hazardous mold air quality. It resulted in all of them coming over to Olivia's campus. In June of 2020, the survey was completed, distributed. July of 2020, the survey results were found and it came out that there was general support for a referendum and continued interest in this partnership. Moving forward, October 2020, the school board approved, the school board voted to permanently close the Burd Island campus for educational use after the months of discussion and the public hearing. The district had open communication with the EDA to continue to do that. November of 2020, the board voted unanimously to propose this bond referendum or to happen in February 2021. And that's where we're at right now. It did not pass. We have to move on and to the next plan. I, through all of that, none of that would have been accomplished without the guidance of ICS. Throughout this entire process, we have received transparency and guidance from both Mr. Bransoy and Ryan from ICS. I have, I am no expert in this and any of these areas. And I've trusted them. I've trusted both of these individuals to provide these recommendations and provide advice, professional advice based on the experience they have had. They've had a lot of experience with school board bonds and referendums. And I have built a tremendous amount of trust in them. And with every decision that has been made thus far, I believe it is what is best for our students. They put the students' person, everything that they've guided with us. I am very proud of our students and staff and all that they have accomplished and activities, academics, fine arts, you name it. I believe it is vital to put our students first as we move forward to the next phase. And I ask myself, okay, where do we go from here? What is the next phase? We need to trust this process. Our students deserve this. And we have worked through this for two years of planning, over two years. And I believe it's in our best interest to not start over. We have a good base information. We've got to go back to the facts. With more communication with our community constituents, we can come up with a good solid proposal moving forward. We know we have chronic facility needs. We know that. We need to know what we do next. Do we band-aid? Are we through and get another bond referendum passed or proposed to hopefully pass? I believe there is general support for one campus solution. Now we need to find out if it comes down to lowering the cost of a new bond referendum located where we had it out there at the hospital, or if it comes down to gaining more support to do something at this existing campus here. How do we get there? I, I believe that we still need to move forward with these discussions, building with the facilities committees and the small group settings with the bold progress group. But we have to move forward knowing that these students deserve that from us. We have to come together to put a plan together and it's vital. It really is. And that, those are the components that I feel that will help us get to that next step. But I just had to recap because I felt the need was there. We put a lot of work into this. We have to move forward and having those conversations with those, those groups are going to be really important.
I don't think anyone's arguing the fact about moving forward. I just feel like we've, I've been part of this for the last two weeks too as a community member. And I've gone to plenty of meetings and I feel that the, the people were not heard or listened to. Had they been listened to and actually heard, we wouldn't have had this referendum vote down as much as it has been. You, you go on to the whole trust issue. Okay, if you want to go down that road, I will go on that road with you. As far as the trust issue, first I want to back up two years ago and just ask Mr. Bransoy and the board and Ryan from ICS, did you or did you not have a meeting at the state convention?
Oh, wow.
No, I'm just asking. Did you, did you not have a meeting?
And we had, we had.
And you talked about building the new school.
That's who you must be getting that information from, I'm assuming.
Yeah, he, it's okay. He said it's yours.
And that's fine.
But I'm just asking a question, which violated open meeting law because the public knew nothing about it. The, the press knew nothing about it. And you did talk about building a new school.
And we did, we did talk about that.
Okay, so that, that's a violation. So just.
And that's been taken care of.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just stating it because I just want to, you wanted to do that. So then when we were doing this whole, when Ryan was going through and we were doing the whole thing about the school, the tours and stuff, we talked about the trust thing. We were told that the HVAC system in the old school in Bird Island didn't work, that they couldn't get anybody to fix it. Well, lo and behold, shortly after we closed the Bird Island School, there was a business in Bird Island that went there, hired somebody. Within three hours, they had that HVAC system up and running for under $300. The roof.
I'm not knowing all this. I mean, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to kind of argue, not argue, but just, so who said what in that situation? Because like, we're bringing this stuff up and like, did Ryan say that? Who said it? I, I just need to know like who, I went there. So did Danny say it couldn't be fixed?
Danny said it couldn't be fixed.
And they probably dealt with a different insurance company or boiler company. And, and so.
In fact, you know, the filters were never changed on that. I saw the filters. Our different flag. But I'm just saying, you're going about the trust issues. We trusted you to take care, we trusted the board. I don't know who's on board. I'm not pointing fingers. We trusted the board to take care of our children over in that school. And when we went on the tour, there were tons of these hanging tiles all over there which could have easily been replaced. What are they, $12, $15 tiles? But for the steering thing, they were left laying out all over. The whole mold thing, we found out about the mold in December of 2018. And we're supposed to be for the kids. Well, then the mold was not cleaned up until June of 2019. And we let the kids sit in that school for six months without cleaning the mold. So I'm just like, you're talking about the whole trust thing. You're talking about for the students. And then when we do close the Bird Island School, we were told there's going to be adequate room over here. Well, then I find out that one of the abandoned bathrooms is used for Title I room. And another Title I teacher is teaching during, right on a landing by a main exit in the hallway. If, if we have ample classrooms over here, why are they teaching in rooms like that? I'm just asking questions because you're talking about trust. As a community member, I'm showing you that that's some of the things that people are questioning, I question. So I'm not angry, but I'm just saying you're bringing up the whole trust issue thing. And that's, you know, I'm, that's what I've been covering. So.
None of these are on Ryan though. This has nothing to do with Ryan.
I'd like to go back to, to that topic. We're talking about ICS. Ryan, the, the board, I mean, I understand you've been part of this process too, but the board that has worked with him for the past two years. He has answered all of our questions. I have never found that, you know, that he has not given us our say. He gives us options. He helps us, helps guide us because he has the expertise and I appreciate that. Yes, as far as, yes, the board is all the stuff you're saying, it is our fault. It is our fault. We should have been more, well, I don't know. I mean, we're not day-to-day employees. So that is, that is, it's stuff that should have been fixed. Okay, so I guess I'm not going to go over that stuff because really we're talking to ICS right now. And, and I have not heard a reason really against ICS. And the people that have worked with them for the past few years, I don't feel like any of us, I don't, I don't feel like I need to change because I feel like we can go forward with the work we've done and still listen. And we're going to listen to everybody. If you didn't feel listened to, you're going to get listened to now. Well, you should have been listened to because we, we did listen.
Well, the only other thing I can bring up is that we never did get plans. And we've asked to see plans.
But he stated why we did ask.
That's beside the point. Your, your community members wanted to see plans. They wanted to see what they were going to be paying for. And we did not provide that for them.
Okay, but when Theresa, when that was brought forward, the vote was like two weeks out. There's no way to get plans in two weeks. And that, that to me, and like I said, I, I have seen some of the things that have been said on community Facebook pages and, or not community Facebook pages, but Facebook pages attacking things. And I'm like, wow, if people are going to say this, and then we give them a design like he showed us per him. And I said, so show us what it really looks like. It was nothing what it looked like. So if people, there are people that will go after, wait, that is not what we voted on. So I think that's a bad.
We've got to pour this money to have an architect do a design of a plan of what we're going to have without knowing if that referendum was going to pass.
Right. That's what a lot of places do, like your Rempil County Hospital, Bird Island, like right now, they're looking at a retirement home in there. People do that all the time.
They don't have to ask for, ask for yours though for money.
Right. The only thing though is my, my whole thing is that we requested that, Ryan.
That's not on Ryan though either.
Well, ICS, we asked ICS.
They don't do that though. We'd have to approve that. And we didn't approve that. And then our, our architecture is what gives us that design. That's not ICS.
Well, I wasn't, we were told that. How, how are we that as a community when we're asking for it and it doesn't? I'm just saying, that's another thing that you're not listening to your constituents. And it showed by the defeat of the referendum.
Yep.
Well, one thing, Ryan, and this was like two years ago when we started this, and, and you gave us the big number, $17 million for Bird Island, $17 million for Olivia. And I asked you numerous times, give us the details. How did you get that number? Where did the number come from? We never got details. We, how many years ago did we have Ingon or someone come in here? And they detailed everything out. It was a big, huge book like this. And I'm still looking for it because I know Jeff's got it in his.
That was not Ingon.
Well, so we had somebody that came in and did a detailed.
That was a totally.
Well, whoever it was, I'm still looking for it. But they, it was right down to details like, okay, the furnace is not working. This is what's wrong. This is what's going to cost. I mean, it was a huge binder.
It was a facilities assessment on repairs is what it was.
Well, yeah.
I think to be technical, it was ESG and it was only mechanical system. That, that's.
Okay, yeah. So when, when you give us a number and throw it out there in the sky, to me, I don't like that. I want to see the details. I mean, how do you get the, how do you get two individual buildings that are exactly the same amount to fix up? To me, that makes no sense. That, that cannot happen in the real world. And that's too perfect. So to me, I would have liked to seen details. And I asked you numerous times, how did you get that number? Where the number coming? And no other board members asked you, but we never got those details. It was just one lump sum number. And then how did you get the $34 million?
And I don't feel like that was just, you just gave us a number.
On your website, the People Step Up website, there's an assessment report for, for both the elementary school and the high school. On that report, if you, if you go all the way to skip all the verbiage, there's Excel documents that have all the line item costs for everything.
Exactly. Every little piece. I don't think it's.
It's on the website.
That was produced in, I think, March of 2018.
I just, I feel like, I feel like Ryan will do whatever we need him to do.
Yeah, I agree.
I, I know he will. And I trust that he will still give us the same, you know, if you ever ask a question, he will answer it.
Well, I don't know. There are lots of times at the steering committees, there was plenty of questions being answered. And we were always told, we'll answer them at the end of the committee or at the end of the meeting. And then the, and the meeting came, they wouldn't get answered. So then it'd be like the next meeting. But we'd be on a different topic. We'd have to move forward to something else because you couldn't go where, what we talked about last time because we had to keep moving. So I have to say, I felt there were lots of times our questions weren't answered.
Okay, for the board, I feel like our questions, the people that have worked with him closely, our questions have been answered. So I, I feel like, I mean, I trust that ICS is still the company that, well, otherwise what's, the alternative is starting absolutely over from square one. I'm not sure we have the time to do that. I really don't.
The time or the money.
The time or the money. Plus, and I don't, why would we need to? We don't need to.
I, I really believe moving forward with the facilities committee that is going to be very helpful. We have, you know, our maintenance staff, we have our administrators there. We have Ryan. They can help prioritize the needs that we have right now that we have to take care of.
I think we need to start over just because I think we need a whole new assessment just to get fresh blood in here. But what would it hurt to start over?
Money.
And time.
And I think we did that. Bird Island EDA asked to do an assessment of their building because they didn't believe ICS's evaluation. They did it. We allowed them to do that. They did it. Their assessment came back worse than what Ryan had put together. And so then all of a sudden, that assessment is no longer is filed away someplace. So you can go through that process again. But you're going to repeat yourself. this, you go on our website and look at the data that's there. And it's there. And, and how many people have taken the time to do that? I don't think very many have, but yet they're very, very, very critical. What was the reason for that referendum going down? I've thought that over 100 times trying to figure out. And I think, and I've shared with you before of the negativism that came out of this. And nobody was looking at the positives of this, but we heard the negative about time after time in the last two to three weeks. That scared the heck out of me. The stuff that we're saying. I get a call and they're saying, why are you building a dome athletic field out there by the hospital? I said, what? Well, that's what you're asking for. There's no place in that proposal, is there any dome being erected? That's the one of the simpler things.
Frustrating when you put a website out there to put out information. And it, it doesn't get used because it's just easier to, for the public to, to spread stuff like a dome being built. You know, that's, it's, it's very frustrating.
It gets very frustrating. And no matter how many times you correct it, that's not heard.
It's all on social media. And one of the things like ICS was making $10 million. I mean, that was everywhere. That's not true. That wasn't true. A lot of misinformation.
I think that's where I think the failure was, was all the negativism that came out of this. And how much of that is true? I had very few people come into my office or give me a call and ask about details. But they had it out on the, on the website. It's there. And I've invited people to come in and sit down. If I don't have the answer, I can get hold of Ryan and he won't get the answers. He's done that for us more than once. And so I, I think before, I would recommend moving away from ICS. I want to know what the specifics are.
Yeah.
If they don't trust us, why? Why don't you trust me? I don't know. I don't know what I've done. But I do know when I first came here and I walked in that building in Bird Island, I right away knew there's something. And then I started talking to staff. And then I started talking to people. And you know the comment that I got? Back from people, well, it's always been that way. I said, what? And that's what we started with. And so we started the planning and looking. And, and that fall or that winter, that's when we started getting them involved. And finding out what, what.
You were testing air quality at that time, correct?
Yeah.
And the reason, I, I got to go back to the mold thing, why it didn't get tackled until June is because the school was empty at that point, right?
No, it wasn't.
In June? No, like empty of kids, the summertime. Kids aren't in there.
I mean, like. The abate, for the abatement to happen. They couldn't have kids in there.
Right.
No, but you, they were, we were told about it before Christmas vacation. They could even done it during Christmas vacation.
I I don't know.
We did it that and what we did, we closed the two classrooms off that IA came in and and did a sampling of it. There was two classrooms that was issue. We closed those off and kept operating.
Air quality was monitored.
However, I just want to go back to the whole steering committee and you're talking about full trusting. I just know that there are a number of people on the steering committee, for whatever it's worth, that didn't buy into that. And I mentioned that to Ryan several times. The people weren't, there are people that weren't on board that weren't buying into it.
But there are people that were.
Okay, but they they ended up being the minority because look at the majority voted it down. I asked for a contract, for ICS contract. Granted, Mr. Bransway, you sent me four pages under the six.
I don't know. I don't want to do it.
No, you got four of the six.
I don't think that was intentional.
And Jill.
No, why didn't you tell me?
I texted you.
You didn't.
I texted you to ask for it and the next thing, the email, and the next thing I know, you emailed and got Ryan involved.
Because I want you to get the information from the source. I was at work. I didn't have the email or the the contract on me.
I had emailed Bransway. I was waiting for him. I was trying to get it from you. I thought, well, he's not.
I said, I didn't have it. So you know what? I like people, okay, so when I want to get information, I go to the person who's gonna give me the best information.
And that's Mr. Bransway.
As a board, well, I sent it to both of them because I figured if you have questions on the contract, why wouldn't you ask?
Well, then guess what? Ryan wouldn't even give it to me.
I think this needs to stop. Like, I'm sorry, timeouts, but honestly, like, this is, it, that's.
It is. We're kind of.
Yes, I think that we need to keep moving forward. I'm sorry. I I I apologize, but I think we need to move forward.
Well, I would just say, let's not insult the intelligence of the general public then as far as you say that they're being misinformed. People can read. People know budgets, what they can afford and what they can't afford. They saw what you proposed. They couldn't afford, they, we can't afford it.
And that's what we're going to have the next step in the process.
And that's your interpretation. It might be one. That's what you're saying right now. But we don't know. And now we're coming back.
We can afford it.
And now we're going to talk with them, uh, the groups and find out why. You know, the, there's a lot of misconceptions out there, a lot of untruths that were being shared. And that that was happening. So now it's up to this group, the seven board members, to come together. And you make a decision as a team. It isn't what one person wants or two. It's what majority wants. And that's, that steering committee, I've heard that before, that not everybody thought, no. Not everybody did. And but we got consensus. That's what we're after, what the majority wanted.
I remember the big whiteboard and and what the importance of each one of those steps were. And that's where us as a board went back and said, okay, if this is what's important, then this is what we feel we need to go forward with. That's kind of how it got laid out. It was we, safety was a big thing. Safety was number one, I believe, if I can remember correctly. Safety, um, there was a list, a whole list. And so we went through those steps one by one. And this is what we came to the conclusion as a board, what we were gonna do and how we were going forward with that.
Well, I think one of the biggest mistakes, going back from the beginning, the biggest mistake we made is when, when, I think it was Dale and Jill came to the board members and says, each of you can pick five people to put on the board.
Okay, that has been past practice though, honestly, anytime.
Why is that a mistake?
But that was a big mistake. Because this is what happens. When you, when you don't want, like, I had mentioned in one of the meetings, why don't we just ask the public, who wants to be in on this meeting? Well, you guys just pick your five people. So we picked our five people. But there was a board member that picked their five and two of them were told they they did not want them on there. And they weren't gonna invite them because they didn't want them on there. So now, to me, that's handpicked. You you want certain people on the board that are gonna go and think the way you think. And that's just common knowledge.
I'm sorry. It was, it's been past practice. We've done strategic planning. We've each invited five people and you try to think of, like, I'm I'm thinking of people like Lily and who would, you know, who, business owners, any, that's how I came up with my list. I apologize if we didn't do it the way you think we should have done it, you know.
Well, Jill, if I would have came to you and said, I'm sorry, Jill, we're taking two of your people off there because we don't like them. We don't want them on there because we don't think they're going to go to the, we don't think they're gonna go the way we want them to go, so we don't want them on there.
Who said, who said that they couldn't be on?
Mr. Bransway called this board member and said, I'm not putting these two people on there because I don't want them on there.
So here's the thing, like, I never went for my tip, I I people I asked, I had no idea what their beliefs were, what their thoughts were. I just gave five names that I thought would be good individuals to give detail. And it turns out probably three of the people I chose were the people that didn't want to see new skill building, but that's okay. We all have to have differences of opinions and that's okay to be different. And at that time, we weren't, we didn't know what we were gonna do.
That's true.
Exactly. But I think there was just, I only heard of one person that couldn't be on and there's, there's, that makes sense to me.
There was two.
I only have one.
Well, so there were two. And I know people were offended with the assigned seating too when you came in.
I mean, we need to move on.
Yeah, well, these are things that if if they, if he was part, if Ryan was part of this process of doing that, the thing of it is, is it gets a negative vibe to the people. So are we going to?
But why are we, Ryan, why are we sitting on this? Let's move on. But number one is, there was one person.
Two.
One.
Two.
You and I can talk later.
There were two. Yes, there was two. One, you told him that he had, he took his kids out of mold and he doesn't need to be on the board. His kids are gone. And the other one, you know who it is.
No.
Yes.
No.
Let's keep moving on. I mean, I think, do we, I think, feel like we agreed last week when we were here, that I think some of the things that we need to do is, is talk to the, the, um,
Citizens.
Yeah, thank you. And I I think we need to. I think we need to talk to those people. I think we need to deal with DLA, GFW. I think, I said it last week, it's not about what I want.
I agree.
It's not about what you want. It's about what everybody wants. And I think that those are good places to start. I think that everybody probably has their opinions about what happened in the past. It's over.
Yeah.
It's over. We need to move on as a group.
But I think we need to realize why. You gotta always know the why. If you never let people tell you the why or you never tell them the why, you can't make progress.
Right.
And so the thing is, is like, we all make mistakes. None of us are perfect.
And it's absolutely.
But I want to know what I've I've done wrong and I want to better myself or do better the next time and not repeat it. So I don't think we need to repeat mistakes that we've done. Let's start fresh. Let's start over. Let's go.
Let's start from.
I gotta, I gotta bring, Mr. Bowen, are you gonna unmute yourself? Come on, you're gonna be part of this conversation. This is your Zoom, doesn't mean you're not part. All right, how is it going, Brian?
It's going wonderful, very well. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right. Um, this is just difficult to listen to. It it really is. I I would be frustrated to be a community member and sit in and listen to you guys. Uh, myself being included in the group, um, pretty embarrassing, very much so. I personally, with with how things went with the with the first referendum, I'm not disappointed in it. Um, I think the people talk to, so we have to listen to them. And I think that's the outline that's been set in front of us uh, by Mr. Bransway. He's already organized it all, so we're gonna listen to the other groups. I do think, like you just said, uh, we gotta put some of this stuff in the past. The thing about members on the steering committees and things like that, I've heard the same thing over and over again for the last year. I think now it's been said, it's out there, everybody heard it. We don't have to say that stuff ever again. Um, I'm excited about, you know, what what the future holds, what's gonna become of all of this. Uh, we're not the first school that ever failed a referendum. Most every one does fail the first time. Uh, I think our community did a good job about voicing their opinion on it and where they thought it was at. And they didn't like the, they didn't like the plan that was put out there. That's what it is. That's all the vote is. That's, that's how our democracy works. Um, you put out a, a thing for people to vote on and then they decide. The school board doesn't decide. Uh, ICS doesn't decide. ICS put out the best plan that they thought would be best for our students going forward. And they thought this would be the ideal situation, especially with the hospital involvement. Uh, that would be a great opportunity for our students to have a fantastic facility, along with a facility that could possibly be worth millions of dollars that was going to be right next door, that the school didn't have to pay for and the community didn't pay for. So I don't fault ICS. I I don't have any reason not to trust them. Um, as far as being a firm that does this, they have to have transparency. They have audits, just like our books have audits at the end of the year. They have to show all the numbers as everything goes through it. Uh, they wouldn't be in business as long as they've been in business and they wouldn't still be building projects around the state if, uh, they weren't doing their job. I'm a chiropractor. That's what I do. That's my, my number one is my family and my religion. My number two would be my business. And then I would go into the school board and things. I don't want to plan building a whole school. I want someone else to do it for me. If there's people in our community that want to step up and do it for no charge or a small fee, I'm fine with that. If they want to draw a picture of a school for a small fee, I'm all right with that. But otherwise, I'm thinking, I'm looking forward to going forward. I'm looking forward to doing this, meeting with the people, finding out why they didn't like, what they didn't like. I'm looking forward to finding out what's gonna work out and what people agree on. I think the biggest thing is talking with people around is that, uh, they're excited. They know we need a change. They know something needs to be done. There's a lot of communities that go into this and they don't, uh, they don't even agree that there's a problem. And I know that our community understands there's a problem and it's an urgent problem that needs to be taken care of quickly, uh, because our schools aren't functional to educate our students properly, to get them ready to go out. You know, we're trying to make them be able to adapt to a changing world in our mission statement and we're not able to do all that. So I'm excited about it. Um, now let's, like you just said, you guys, I I agree with you a hundred percent where you all just said, now we go forward. Let's, let's make the plan and let's work together to get things done. Work with the community, work with the communities around us, find out where they're at. And then after that's all done, then we'll put another plan out there and we'll see what the public thinks about it.
Good job, Brian. I knew there was a reason I had you on mute. Nice job.
I'm going back to being muted.
All right, you can stay unmuted. Uh, all right, so going on to number two. The list of possible funding options discussed at the work session.
This is what, uh, come out of our discussion last week, uh, last Monday was looking at what options is there for additional funding. And so I've asked Ryan to do some research on that and and to communicate with some people that are in that area. And so maybe you want to tackle these, Ryan.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if we went over all of these specifically. I think we touched on all of them kind of in in general terms, but I I was really interested in in kind of the more, what's, what's the option for urgency, right? That's, that seems to be, the the things that need to happen now, how do we get them taken care of? And I talked to, you know, our office, which has the the amount of referendum experience in our office is, you wouldn't believe it, it's hundreds and hundreds of referendums that we've gone through, working with districts. These are the four funding sources that we know of. I thought, I did call the Department of Education just to make sure that we were all on the same page as far as our office of understanding what the possible, um, funding sources are. That, again, kind of, they agree here that there is no quote unquote, emergency type of situation in the district culture. I talked to financial advisors and I talked to other consultants. So I, I hopefully, um, I mean, again, I can, I can sort these sources if you, if you want names and phone numbers, if you all want to talk to them too, but, um, yeah, you're, you're, the the simplest thing, um, there's two kind of simple situations to get dollars. That's use your LTFM funding. So the the revenue that you're given by the state, based on your age of building and enrollment, that's approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. You can use that to do repairs, obviously, that's what it's there for. You can use that money to pay a bond payment. So you can go out and get a five million dollar bond and use that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars every year to pay that bond payment down. Just do the simple math, right? So if it's, if you decide to get a million dollar bond and you use a hundred thousand dollars of your LTFM revenue, it'll take you ten years to pay that off, right? And that's no interest, that's just simple math, right? So that's how it's gonna work. You have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You can use that to pay a bond payment. However, long a duration that that, you want to use that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is how long it's gonna take to pay off. Or you can use a small portion of it. So there's all sorts of, of, uh, combinations there, but it's, it's impactful. That means you would not have that money then every year to do your repairs, right? And that's something that if a building solution on this site were to come through, whether that's gonna be useful or not useful, you know, in that situation, but we can study that. Um, so that's the quickest thing you could probably do because you can literally put a, a plan together and and sell bonds like within the next month or two, if you really get after that. The the second one is referendum. And and we talked about that a little bit the last, uh, last meeting, that the quickest that you're gonna be able to go off a referendum would be August of this year. So we'd have to do a review and comment. That would have to be just submitted to the Department of Education in May. The board would have to pass a resolution in May to go off a referendum. You'd have to pass the referendum then in August. After that's November, it's the same timeline you skipped, over two months. So those are, those are your, I'll quote unquote, emergency options. That's the fastest timeframe, um, to get things done. Now, we didn't talk about what happens once you have the money. Once you have the money, it becomes a a little more difficult. If you are going to request then that architects and engineers start to design systems to repair, you've got a design process to go through. Obviously, if you're fixing systems, you don't necessarily get public input on that, right? You just fix them. But that kicks in all of the the code requirements and and all of that process. So it starts that, that snowball effect. Can you do some things that just fix your mechanical system? Yes, you can. That that could lead to other issues that are gonna be exposed in 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 the process of of those repairs. I'm not going to claim there's a lot of them or there's none of them. I'm just telling you, it it could just start that process of of kicking into other things that you were not planning on. So it's a little scary to say, okay, I want to go out and get a couple million dollar bond to do just these emergency repairs when in reality, once you start going through the plan review process and the state review process, you're going to potentially be then told to fix this, that and the other thing based on their plan. So it's, it's a three row and and I'll, if the board elects to want to do something like that, I will be here for you to to do my work and and hopefully cross all those Ts and dot all those Is to make sure we all know what's happening. Um, but it's, it's a little bit of an unknown there. And that's, it's a, it would be very, I I would be very worried about making sure I have it all covered. But it is something that, if that's the way the board wants to go, I'm not gonna run away from it. We'll, we'll figure it out somehow, somewhere. Um, but those, sorry, kind of burped a little bit there, but those are the two kind of quickest things that we can. You obviously have the capital, right? You have a bank account, you have those reserves sitting there, you can use them. But again, all of the repairs, it's, it's tough. If you're gonna involve an architect and an engineer, it starts a process that that gets more involved. With more jurisdictions, doing reviews, more inspections, more codes and things like that to to address or or to to adhere to. If you just want to take your money and go hire a plumber to fix some plumbing lines, you can do that all day long. It just takes all of the lack of a better word, professionals out of it. And a lot, then you can go hire guys and do work all day long. And and you probably won't get kicked into that jurisdictional review. But you're relying on that type of relationship. That being said, if the total project is over a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars, it has to be publicly bid, right? So now you need documents. So you need to go back to those architects and engineers, do produce documents for that every plumber in the region or wherever has a chance to bid on it because it's public work. So I'm, I'm talking fast about all this stuff, but it's, it's not so easy just to go get things done. Call it what you want, government, whatever, that's just the way it works.
And part of it, right, is like, if, for instance, we redid our kitchen. All we wanted to do is new countertops and new cabinets. When we got in there, it was like, oh, now we have to redo sheet rock, wiring, plumbing, because they didn't make the code.
Yeah.
And I mean, that was the house in nineteen sixty nine. So I mean, it's, it's kind of like the same thing, right? Essentially.
And it, the, the, I don't, I don't want to make it sound more scary than it is, but I don't want to downplay the effect of a renovation or even repairs because that, there is the exposure there that once you start something, you're going to have to. You're going to have to get to the end and you might not know where the end is. The, the, the pipes that Denny was showing you last week. If you, if you just common sense think about steam running through a pipe for decades. I'm sure any of us can go grab some of those lines and just crush them. So, so, so that's fine and, and that's not a big deal. Have a go at time. But when you say, okay, let's plan to repair that now. How far do you go? How, how do you say, well, I'm just gonna replace this fifteenth feet of, of a steam line? But what if where you're trying to connect to breaks, doesn't work, you know, it's, it's brittle and it. So you, you replace the next fifteen feet because that's what you have. And that's the same thing. You know, you just walk down this road of. In buildings like this of this age and, and where it's at. You don't know where that's gonna add. And, and I would love to say we can map it all out and tell you exactly what it's gonna be. Again, I will do work. I will get contractors in here and crawl up and down and, and try to figure that out. It's. I, I, I'm very comfortable in saying we're gonna end up back to the same spot as saying. There's a lot of money here that's gonna have to be put into this building in order to get the systems. We're operating correctly. But again, you guys can tell me that that's what you want. We can help you with that.
I think me personally, I would like to decide what we're gonna do. Like, are we gonna continue out there at the hospital? Are we going to look at just doing something here? If we're gonna look at just doing something here, then what do we really wanna go? Because essentially what could happen, you go for a referendum for five, six million, then you add on, let's just say here. And that's another, you know, forty, whatever it is. I mean, you could be potentially back where we were. And if everybody's big thing is the money aspect of it, which if that's a large, which I would assume it's a large part of it. We could be back where we were. Do you know what I'm saying? So I just, I think before we decide on going out for a referendum for. Emergency, we need to figure out what we wanna do and what it looks like or what it's gonna look like. Just my opinion.
And I think that's what Ryan is saying, what we saw last week when Denny was talking. He could go on and on because he's saying that. You know, you, you see this pipe here? What about this pipe over here? And it's mushrooms. And he spent about an hour today with Lindsay and trying to, I wanted a budget for cap leveling. And it's, it just mushrooms. And I said, Danny. Oh, yeah. But I take a step back and I said, Danny, how many years? Have you been told, yeah, we need to do that, but we don't have the money, so put a band-aid on. That is what has happened for, and I made the comment ten years. And the person I was talking to said, no, it's twenty. You know, that's. That's where the, that's the predicament we're in right now, so. Um, but what you're saying, I totally agree with. Do you wanna put more Band-Aids on? For a million or two and then do it. And so put that plan together now and, and get a, get one together. So I think that's what we're talking about. But last week, we were talking about what is some ways we can generate some quicker. Revenue to take care of some of this. And so that's what Danny's working with right now is, is, is our cap leveling. Looking ahead, so we'll take a look at that too.
And don't, we talked about it too. This is not special to all. I don't know how many referendums you could look over the last few years and a part of that referendum being some sort of deferred maintenance at facilities. Whether they're building a new facility, also then repairing old facilities or addition or whatever. That's what districts have to do. So it's, it's not something where I would look at, oh my gosh, you guys are so different than everybody else. Look what, look what's. Strange here. Well, just, you're at a point now where you really, really realize.
Something's gotta be done, right?
It's really important to talk to the citizens that are for progress, because if you want ideas. I think that's where you go first. Find out what, what the community is looking for, what the community wants. You might be surprised. You might be just amazingly surprised what they would like.
That was the first purpose of our task force. The five meetings we had was for public input. Share and share and share and I. Um, and I watched Ryan do that.
You know, Mr. Bransoy, I was part of that. I honestly. I didn't feel like I, I got to share what I wanted to share. I felt like it was being more railroaded and I'm just being honest, okay? I'm not, not mad at anybody. I just didn't feel that it was really a, a really good sharing atmosphere. Because at my table, for instance, at my different tables, the way it was situated. It's like, really nobody wanted to share. And if you shared, you got shot down. The very first night I got laughed at. And I've heard comments from other people too, wanting to share at their tables. That's what happened. They either got shot down for sharing their opinion, because it was like, either you thought the way the other three thought. Or no one cared what you thought. So that's why I'm saying now that it got voted down so much, let's ask the community members what they want.
Time out, because Mr. Bransoy does have a meeting on Wednesday with Tom Frank. And we are trying to set those meetings up. So it's not like we're not doing it. It's just hasn't happened yet. So.
And I think what you're saying is, Teresa, I saw that in the referendum in the campaign. There were so many people out there that were afraid to tell, say what they thought. And I heard that time and over and over. And why? Why are we afraid to speak what we, and that's what this is purpose for right now. Is that we need to respect each other and not be afraid. But. The sad part of it is sitting here is all of a sudden you're gonna get quoted what you said.
Or misquoted.
Yeah, and that's wrong. And that's where it's very difficult to sit here in front of a camera. And speak your mind, because you're just speaking right now and, and you want that. So people realize that. And don't quote all the things. And that's, I hear that over, somebody, they want these tapes so that they can go back and study it. And. Sandy, when you said that, they're gonna quote you on it. Well, you were saying it as part of a discussion. I'm just picking up, you didn't do anything, so don't worry. But I'm just saying that, that, that can happen. And so that's, we have to back off and, and, and accept. These comments and this is the reason for it. And so. Uh, but I feel for the board members. I do.
Mr. Bransoy, I agree with you. I, I want to say this too, you know, like. I can tell just by sitting here that I'm not very popular with the majority of people sitting here, because I don't think the same way. But you know what? At least you know where I'm coming from, okay? You're gonna know, because I'll, I'll just, I'm gonna say it out loud. And it's not about being popular. I'm just letting you know that I, I think a little differently. I probably think more like what the, the. People that voted it down think like, which is not a bad thing. And I'm not saying that your way of thinking is wrong, but that's just what I'm saying. The thing that I feel that hurts is I don't mind being quoted and I kinda like being out in the open like this. What hurts me is after the fact, when I get. Phone calls badgering me and somebody hangs up on me after the fact, because the way I express myself on here. Or texts. From people, when, when I'm, I'm, I'm here and they're texting me after the fact. What goes on behind the scenes is worse than what's going on right here. So at least you guys know.
I know. Trust me, I got misquoted in October. I had lots of tears. Of something that I didn't say. I've gotten misquoted actually the last meeting on one of the public forums or that's out there, that I said something I didn't say. Trust me, I get it. Absolutely, I get it. It's not easy.
Well, I have an open book too. I tell you the way it is and I tell you what I feel and what my thoughts are. And I'm not gonna sneak behind the door and tell somebody something behind closed doors. I'll just tell you the way it is right out in the open. That way y'all know where I'm coming from too. I'm not, I'm not one to hide anything.
I think that's what makes this difficult though, is that we're human, you know, we. We get together at a work session. The goal is for everybody to have an opportunity to give their opinion and for us to respect that. But what I'm concerned about is we're sitting on a, on a camera here and you're gonna be quoted and that's sad. This is a work session.
I don't, what I say, if I said it was the truth, if they wanna quote me, quote me all they want. Doesn't bother me, cause I'm not trying to hide nothing.
It's the misquoting.
I'm not good at hiding things.
It's the misquoting that sucks.
I tell you the way it is, so I don't have to worry about hiding nothing.
And I'm the same way. It's the misquoting that sucks. And I've been misquoted several times. So it is hard to, to say what you wanna say, because people take what you have. I mean, look at the board website, the. The Facebook page where you try to make a comment. All you're trying to do is help and I get misquoted and I get attacked and I get called shady and it's like, what? I'm pretty open and honest. If I don't have an answer for you, I'm gonna direct you to Bransoy. You know, I, I, I think we're all, we all try to do the best, but I think that, that's besides the point. We need to keep moving forward and.
So I think we should do that. And we'll, we'll continue the discussion. I don't think it's over with at all. Uh, let's keep moving with the agenda here and then maybe we'll get some of those questions answered here too. But. The third on there is what about the hospital, the co-location? You know, do you want that discussion to continue? Um, there's been a lot of time have been spent on that. There's been committees working on it. The board representatives have. Have, have meetings with the hospital and uh, um, so. Do you wanna continue that discussion? Do you wanna keep that open, actually?
I think to me, I wanna keep it open, but I think this is where we're coming in and meeting with some of these people and, and, and a lot of. Getting out in the community and saying, what do people want? So to me right now, I say leave it on the table, but you know, until we really get out there and almost to me, just start kind of that grassroots campaign and say, hey. It, it's hard right now with COVID. I know I've talked to people that said, you know, back when we consolidated back in.
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine, ninety, yeah. Um, you know, they said they would. There was a, a task force and, you know, they would go to every Kiwanis and JCs and all of those meetings and they would be there to answer questions. And I think. That's the hard thing about right now is we can't have all that face-to-face interaction. Um, and so. A lot of people are doing things more on social media, cause that's just how we're living right now. But I really think just talking to the communities and just seeing what do people want, yeah.
They will say things on social media that they would not say to your face, so.
I don't think we should, you're correct. I, I agree. I don't think we should shoot anything down there. No, we shouldn't.
Leave it open.
Leave it, leave it all open and wait to hear.
I do too.
To see what everybody has to say, what they wanna do. Agreed.
Number four then is the neighboring districts. And so I've had a chance, I've. I had a conversation with the superintendent at GFW and the superintendent of BLHS. And again, I've said this before, if I communicate with another district, it's through their administrator. I respect them, they respect me, and that's the way we communicate. So. Um, I've talked with Jeff at GFW and they have a board meeting coming up the fifteenth. And he said that they'll have that on as an agenda item to have this discussion. And then BLHS and talking with Michelle, uh, she threw out three possible dates there and she's gonna. See what dates work with their board. And uh, right now the plan is to pick one of those dates and so, and when they pick a date, then I'll get back to you and planning to meet at Hector. Is the plan, so. Uh, the items there, B, C and D are things that. I think uh, Michelle and I will, will get together and try and put an agenda together for that evening, so we can have a direction we're going in. There's three things there that are, we'll probably be wanting to be out in the open and be talking to them about. About the enrollments, operational costs, revenue, all this. So we'll try and, and, and if you think of things that you're gonna wanna. Bring out in that meeting, don't hesitate to let me know. Text me or send me an email or, or we can talk about it. But that's where we are with those two.
I think Dale, sorry to interrupt, sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Bransoy. Um, I think we have to too, when we meet with these other communities, because I think that's a big question for a lot of people is expanding our tax base. To help um, build one or two schools for the whole county or for sections of the county. And. Uh, there's been some newspaper articles recently that everybody has seen, um, and having those ideas. Uh, I think one thing that we have to be, um. We have to be respectful of is that when they tell us or if they would happen to tell us that they are interested, then we should. Work with them. And if they would happen to tell us that they're not interested, that we have to respect their decision that way too. And not say, well, that's ridiculous that you wouldn't wanna do this. We gotta keep, keep you going. You gotta join us. We're gonna do this. We gotta do this. So I, I, I love the idea. I think we have to talk to them. I think we have to follow that avenue. Uh, but we have to understand that they're their own entity as well and uh, respect what they decide.
Well said, Brian.
Thanks, man. Um, one district that is not on this list, do you want to communicate with or want me to make contact with RCW? That's to the west of us. Ten miles, um, would you wanna?
Might as well.
I don't say yes.
I have not that, uh, I will talk with Doug and, and. And see if we can arrange something there too. And I'm looking at the board coming together, the boards. All of you, not a committee. And so if that's what you wanna do.
Yes.
Moving on then.
So is Michelle gonna reach out to the, her board, the board?
Those are the three dates that we threw out and she's gonna get one or two dates that works with them. And then I'll get back to you.
Awesome, thank you.
That's what she'll do. And then I'll check with RCW and see what they have. And finally, something we were talking about earlier and, and about what's the cost of this building and, and. So I asked Ryan, we've gone through this in our task force and had, had gotten this information. So I asked him to. Review that with us and take a look at if it's gonna entail this building. What, what are we gonna have to look at here? Um, so we can compare it to whatever the other options that we're, we're looking at, so. So you've got some?
Yeah, I, well, I can.
You can put it out.
Yeah, when we, going back to the task force, you know, part of this, when you, when you think about all the decisions that have been made. The, the option to work with the Olivia site, either new building on the site or addition to the site or renovating the existing SOVs and sits. Those were all options, right? We, we talked about them all. We funneled through that. The discussion with the hospital actually came pretty late in the game, if not even like. Like twenty-third hour. And that switched to have that be the most. You know, exciting option and opportunity. And that's, then that's where it went, right? So. Working with the Olivia site has always been on the table. It's always been something to consider. It just wasn't. As prevalent as that potential opportunity. So it got second place, if you will. So. Yeah, I, you know, going back to the original task force meetings and, and the, the options that were there. Do you want me to share my screen?
Sure.
So, you know, this, this, Teresa, this is me being an architect, so you know that. This is why I'm not gonna seriously pocket a building for you. Um, but we talked about in this, I'll, I'll go back to the numbers here in a second, but. Building a, an addition on to the building, keeping kind of what is worth keeping, right? That ninety-nine addition is. Is worth keeping in a scenario like this. So how does it look? And I think we even, in further meetings, I'm going, this is our, our, I think our fourth meeting. Um, we had an option of just going off the, the complete last here. We just left east, sorry, great east and, and occupying the existing building while the east is built and then we transfer over, right? So again, these are concept ideas that were done way back in July of two thousand and nineteen and, and discussed. So. If we look back. And that's really small. So again, these, this was back in two thousand and nineteen, right? So you can see option three here, what I was just showing you. What that looks. So, and again, I'm, there is no way that I'm saying right now, if you went out for a referendum. Or the Olivia site, we can major refer for addition to it, this is what the cost would be. I'd wanna readdress, reassess, re, re-go over that option with everybody in this room and, and probably the public too. To understand what this is.
Oh, so thirty, grand total, thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, seven-twenty, okay.
Yeah.
This is on our website.
Yeah, yeah. So this is part of the, the task force meeting minutes and all that stuff, right? So again, being consistent, the dollars per square foot used for construction, all those things are the same. But some of the items that were involved in this past referendum fail, um, that are different. Like we had a higher technology. But maybe a higher furniture amount. You know, there were some of those things that we, we changed for this referendum that wouldn't be the same, um, that we talked about way back in the past. So we wanna look at those items again, talk about them, what seems appropriate, uh, and, and adjust accordingly. We make, this option three more in, more in line with today's option three.
And that auditorium is on there to rent?
No. So that's another part of it. So you can see up here, um, where my cursor is, that's a hundred and thirty-two thousand square foot building. The building that we proposed in this referendum was a hundred and forty-nine thousand square feet. So the difference, a little bit of the difference there is we're, we're cheaping about thirty thousand square feet of that ninety-nine addition, right? But we didn't have the non-auditorium part of any of the discussions at the task force. So the referendum that just failed, the building was a hundred and forty-nine thousand square feet. Plus the additional, uh, approximately fifteen thousand square feet of auditorium for a total building of about a hundred and sixty-three thousand square feet. So that's why this referendum's cost would seem higher comparatively because the building is much bigger.
So I have a question because one of the, the comments out there was that the new building would be smaller than what we currently have square footage. Like that was, okay, let me say it. For the referendum, out of the hospital, the comment was it was smaller square footage than what this current.
So this current building is, I think, a hundred and fifty-three thousand square feet, which includes the pool. The building in the referendum, keeping it apples to apples, the auditorium property was a hundred and forty-nine thousand square feet. So the buildings were about the same, but so if someone's looking at one fifty-three versus one forty-nine, yes, four thousand square feet smaller. But you have a twenty thousand square foot pool, that would have been classed. So, in essence, there.
Thank you. I just want to clarify.
We've got refurbished one. Did that keep the pool?
So this, this concept of the major addition would be just keep, what you do with this part of the facility, is still up. It's either demoed, re, whatever, but we didn't address. So in the task force process, we didn't get to those details, right? This was just kind of big picture. What are we, what are we looking at at the current option? So we would still have to address how to, how to go about. And you talk about the pool, you talk about the gym, the parking lot, all these components. If we're doing a project on this site, are things that we really wanna consider on how they fit into the.
Is this part of the ninety-nine?
No.
What, when was this built, this library?
I don't know. I'm guessing somewhere in the sixties, plus or minus ten years.
Yeah.
Oh, this was renovated, I think.
Yeah, yeah, it was renovated.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. This was by high school library. That's the only one.
Yes.
Entrance is both this.
Didn't dig that. Right.
Well, no, that would be.
Yes, yes.
Renovated when they did that, right?
That was asked. I think this was done after the addition.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, because when I was in high school, you had to come in that entrance and this was just a block walk. And I mean, granted, but I think even it was done after the ninety-nine addition, the renovation one. I wanna say it was like, it was a lot later. Not a lot, but it was after ninety-nine.
She did ninety-nine when they took the third floor off?
No.
I think so.
Yeah, the third floor, well, the third floor was here in ninety-eight.
Was here in ninety-six. Um, I wonder, I feel like that was even later. That, that was like two thousand five. I don't know why that's sticking in my brain, but I thought that was later than, cause that was around here when they took that off.
I was gonna say.
Okay. Yeah, me either. Don't quote me on that either.
The only reason I got ninety-nine in mind, you know, is because somebody shared that with me a while ago, is that what we're doing here should have been done in ninety-nine.
That was all, I mean, not even this, like the, cause this hallway was all there here when I went to school and then the school stopped. So like where the new gym, that hallway that goes east and west, from there on is all new. Cause, oh my broom, I went, I don't know.
Okay. So that's on the table. And you've got the stuff that ICE has put together at this time. And so, so is that an option you wanna continue pursuing more and putting more time into that? And, you know, that's what we're asking of this.
And I, I could say, so the program, heard that a couple of different times, the space program, what we used to determine how big the new building by the hospital would be, fucking classrooms, square footage, section, all those things, build that program to understand how big that building would be. I can put that into this option. Obviously we have some space that's already existing. So that program will shrink because we won't be worrying about what's actually being built. And kind of, I'll, I'll take this and leave it as it is. So we've always had the comparison of where we started, what the original concept was. And, and put a comparison to say, okay, what we did as far as work for the new building, I'll, I'll try to make it apples to apples, what addition to this site would be. We can see what that would. I'm guessing it's, it's gonna be pretty close, you know? And then we can talk about, do we wanna put a ninety-nine technology? Do we wanna put ninety-nine furniture? Do we wanna use two hundred and thirty-dollar square foot construction? Do we want all those things that are on the table to discuss and make sure that we're agreeing that that's the right thing to do? And I can work on comparisons and all that stuff to make sure that we're, this makes sense to use this for furniture, this technology, this construction cost. So that nobody feels like it's the cold part of the dinner.
Anything else on that?
I don't know if I'm out of place, but if some of these guys kids here, if we're gonna remodel, I just wanna know if they're not gonna be at a trailer. I mean, I, I wanna know that we're stuck in horrible classrooms and we are spending years out there.
That's a good, so this option, when I talk about major addition, it is not utilizing anything from that ninety-nine building north. Okay. So it's, it's building a new building so that you can occupy this while that building is being built. And then once that built, that addition is built, you use it and then this, whatever happens to this happens to this. This isn't renovating any of, again, I'm saying this, you can tell me, no, we want a renovation option too. Let's talk about renovating. But that leads into now, if this building's a little more difficult to, to renovate and occupy at the same time. I'm not gonna say that it can't be done, but it would be pretty invasive to students and function. And, you know, when you think about a boiler room here, how to, how to work on classrooms and things like that. Changing systems, we call them, the mechanical and the system becomes difficult, takes places occupied. So I would recommend probably in that case, just get portable, yeah, grandeur, get the kids out of there, do the work as fast as you can in here and give them that. But again, that's, we can talk about all of that.
So should we, we should probably table that and so we talk with other districts.
Well, to me, you table all of this.
What do you think we need to talk about?
You know, I mean, it's a, it's a good understanding to know what, what you have when you talk to other districts to say, okay, now, what's the potential of a larger district look like? And then what does that mean? So you can compare valid wise. Is standing alone actually less on the tax bill than total?
Right. Space-wise, I mean, that, that could change every aspect of the two side grid. You're like, we have to wait, especially if everybody's like, yeah, we wanna join. And how does that look? Right? Um, one question I did have, like my concern is the ninety-nine addition. What, like the piping and everything? I mean, is that, if things need to be fixed in there, would that all be included?
Well, so we wanna look at that, right?
Yeah.
So again, cost is what we're, is gonna be a big factor, right?
Right.
So ninety-nine, that means that building is playing, it's gonna be twenty-two, twenty-three years old, so kind of hold on. I would say you probably wanna look at the replaced carpeting and, and V C P tile and, you know, fill some of them air handling units and things like that. Would be, yeah, we do look at that. Does that mean it's super expensive to replace this? No, it's just, you wanna make that decision. You wanna be able to make the decision to say, this is not something we're gonna attack right now.
But that could be potentially in with the referendum. That's what we decided, like, community board, everything. That's why we decided to go. That could be something that's added. Just making it up to date so that, you know, I mean, things follow a date so fast now. So just making sure that we're up to code and where we need to be and up to date. So that if something goes out, we're not hurting.
Yeah. So that, that section of the building is, I'll, I'll use it because compared, it gets in good shape. Right? So it's minor stuff.
So rolling up Derek's deal over here with the trailers. If, if it got to the point where we have to find places, could we reopen that west side in Rhode Island just for the time being until we finish things up here? Could we open the west wing over there? So, I mean, we're already using gyms. What's the difference? Could we open that up and utilize it for the time being just to put kids in there so they're not so scrunched over here?
You're, you're looking at me, so I assume you're asking me.
Whoever.
That's a discussion amongst.
I mean, I don't know. Can you open it once we've closed it?
Legally, for the question, I don't.
Yeah. It would require a board action to rescind the motion that was already approved.
But we could, just for the time being, until we got things going over here, we could utilize that, just that west side that they're still utilizing the gym anyways. So that whole west section isn't that bad apparently. So we could use it if we had to.
I'm thinking maybe.
For the time being. I mean, it's a thought, just a thought. I mean, some place to put kids so they're not on the hallway in the, in an old bathroom or something like, you know what I mean?
There's a, there's a cost to the portable, right? So if you're gonna get.
Right. So if you're already got.
So I'm, I'm sure analyzing that building would, would be part of the process to understand. What might be also part of the consideration though is, is there people or does that, the way or restrict or stop the potential use of that building from outside sources, right? So if that's, again, I'm, I'm.
But then you gotta look too. I would assume that those rooms, I'm just assuming I could be totally wrong. Tell me if I'm wrong. Those rooms are already like probably have storage things in there, I would assume from here. Um, probably feed those kids. I, I'm just asking because I don't know. I mean, what's the lunchroom like? Can we get lunch people back and that, and that being utilized?
Yeah, Teresa had a good idea. And then on the last speech, she said we could act Saint Paris out over there and.
Especially if it's going to three kids.
Maybe they would be welcoming to a lunch program. So it was just a few grades, smaller grades. They can walk across the street, go have lunch in the basement there. And then that way we're not opening up the kitchen again. And you're, you're just keeping them over on that left side.
One, I mean, with COVID, who knows how long this is gonna last, right? So I don't know. So even opening that up to an option.
Yeah. They, they might have to open it up for an option for the, for the COVID thing.
There you go. A lot of that you're gonna have to put in, work with when we're planning and taking a look because it gets to be a cost factor.
Yeah.
Technology is in this building. Now our technology is not in that building anymore.
Right.
And so I think there's lots of little things like this is that we have to process. And so I think that's would be in that, brainstorming section. Okay.
But like you said too, if someone's interested in, I don't know if anybody did, that's something that would prolong.
Well, we just make it fall on me because that's we need it, you know?
I mean, at this point, you don't.
Why would we sell it?
But at this point, you don't. I mean, we just use the gym.
But you possibly could if you wanted to get the title one kids out of here and get them into classrooms. You could, for the time being, just let them be over there, go over there.
I think, um, I think the community group that's working on that building has done a lot of labor. I think they got a lot of, uh, ideas and people, some, uh, want interesting things. So, and, and so I think, you know, item number six is why I just look at that building. Now what are we gonna do? Right now, it's costing us. We're ensuring it. We're going to all the utilities as if we're there. And so, and the idea was to get it removed off our, and as soon as we could. Uh, we're utilizing the gymnasium. That's probably the main thing that we use, uh, as first athletics supports. But, um, I'm sure with Derek, you know, that, that is good for now, but while it continues, we don't know. And, um, so I think, uh, that committee has pretty done a lot of work there. And I think they've got some interesting parties. So I think what Brian mentioned here is, you know, you wouldn't want, this to prevent the building from being sold and being utilized totally.
No, like Sandy said, the school still owns it. And if we need it, instead of buying little portables and paying for portables and technology and the portable, so you got to do it. You're, you're.
I think that's all those things we have to, all those things that put on the table and talk about at that time. I don't think we make that decision right now, but I think that committee is working very extensively on, on utilizing that building. And so I don't know what they're, I haven't been at the last meeting, but they're, they're doing a lot of work and trying to promote and get to people involved with it. So, so we'll see where that takes it. Uh, that's the number six is I think we, you know, when we sell it, the E D A and Rhode Island are interested. Any of these are interested in it? Looking at the maintenance of it right now. Um, Benny gets lots of emails. Quite often, I'll leak here, I'll leak there. And, uh, you know, with this type of weather, the freezing and the thawing, it's really creates problems with flat roofs. So that's an issue. But, and then we have to decide, are continuing to spot it. Is that an option? Is that a need? And so those are all things I think we need to brainstorm and, and talk about as we're moving forward. And so that's.
Good point. And regardless, we'll probably need it for the next three or four years until something does get done because, you know, we need that too.
Well, and if whoever, if someone decides what they want, if they're willing to just say, yeah, we'll let you use it. Cause I know that was something that we talked about when we discussed it. If someone comes in and says, hey, we wanna buy this, we say, we still need to utilize these gym spaces until we're done.
But most generally, they're not gonna just let you.
If you're going to charge.
If you.
Right. So then here again, something you've already owned, you're gonna pay for it.
Yeah. But if Sandy, you look at the law, I mean, have you looked to see what it costs? Are utilities over?
You're paying them anyway. We're keeping the gym open now and then.
But if someone else would take that out for him with a big.
I thought we were still gonna use the gym after that.
Well, that's what I'm saying would be a lease, but at that lease, they're not gonna touch.
They're gonna give you a lease because we're gonna give it to you for a hundred dollars a month. They're gonna give you a lease and when that lease comes, they're gonna say, okay, what did we pay for it? And how much or.
It's gonna be less than the utility.
They're gonna add that all together. Don't take yourself.
Well, right, but it's still gonna be less than what our utilities are.
Yeah.
Owns the building, but as long as we own that building, it's costing us money.
Absolutely.
And so I think that's something we need to keep in mind is that, you know, the best instinct would be able to sell that and get it off our hands. Cause it's costing us a lot of money right now.
But like you said, we can't make that decision right now. We have to.
We're making this, no, not now, but it's on the table. But I think it needs to be answered. And so, those are all things you need to think about. Moving forward. It's not a lot to think about. There is a lot. But those are the four things. If anybody wants to add anything to that. Number seven is what leadership, the board wants to be in and charge of each of the items above.
I'm gonna say that I think we need all the others at this point. Just from our discussion tonight, I think we all need to learn to work together. So I, I, I think all of those people need to be, working together in community here. Cause this is something that we all wanna do right. I mean, I've heard that from the, um, community members that they, they wanna, they wanna get this right. Maybe just do one more hole. And I'm all for that. So let's work together.
the community members that they they want to, they want to get this right. Maybe just do one more vote. And I'm all for that. So let's work together.
Which means that we might have meetings more than. I mean, and that's fine. That's fine, but I think that we need to. Yeah, I think I agree. I think that everybody should work together. I think we need to work together, the board, with the administration, with ICS.
There might come a time where we can kind of, you know, separate off and say, this person, this group is interested in this or this.
I mean, to me, I agree for the time being to get this off the ground. It has to be just a collective, you know.
Okay, and number eight talks about timeline. And I think that has a lot to do with.
We're just going to keep working.
We're just going to keep working.
We're going to go to work today? I don't know.
You you said an hour.
I like what you did. I believe you.
I get length for making meetings so long.
I think number one, there is meeting with the bold citizens of progress. I think that's something we need to we need to do. And and so I've talked with some of the different individuals. So we're looking at and small groups of discussion where we can listen. And then they can share. And so and we move forward. So we'll be scheduling that. And I'm sure you want it to be with the entire board.
Yes, I think so.
Okay, so we'll we'll work with that. A meeting with Todd and Lindsay. So then Todd and I can, maybe I can find out the timeline that would work for for his group. And so we'll we'll move forward with that. So we'll see how that goes. And then number two is facilities committee. We mentioned this last week that the facilities committee has not been very active. And I think it I it needs to be active. Because I think the committee needs to get together and brainstorm and then come back to the point. That's the purpose of a committee. And so I would I would think that they would dive into it and do more research and working with people. And it'd be easier to get three people together rather than seven. I don't know. And so. Thoughts on that?
Well, you have Danny on this one too. Who else besides the three board reps, you, Denny?
It'd be Danny and I, and then Jamie's on it, Teresa.
And Brian.
And Brian, yeah.
So when I, like, typically in the past, it's usually been both principals. If they're available, sometimes Ryan, depending on what we're talking about, sometimes Denny. Well, actually, always Denny, Denny and Dale for sure. Sometimes a principal, sometimes Ryan. But sometimes we've had the, oh, the what's that company from on the video? Or the the air people that came in when I, yes, when Brett had his fun pants on. Thank Patrick's Day. See, I remember your fun pants.
I wonder why you're misquoting?
I was like, wow, you, because you didn't see him. All of a sudden, he stands up from his desk and he's got Patrick's Day pants on. So that we all met with them too. It just kind of depends on what we're, yeah, what we're discussing.
Do we have to have an organizational meeting first that to talk about what we, how we go about it? I've never been part of the facility committee, so I'm not sure what. I mean, other than the fact that.
I mean, we can.
Walk the building or?
Well, no, it's not always that necessarily walk. It's like what we've met about with the air quality guys. And they they came in and we said, this is why we feel this way. Here's our suggestions. Here's kind of what we think. Gave us facts, gave us all their paperwork on the air quality and who's checked it. It's not necessarily walking the building because Denny has it. Like, I have a stack, I don't know how big was that piece paper? That stacked paper from Denny on what all was wrong. And that was last year, early last year. So, you know, it's sometimes it's just getting together, like, what is, what's emergency? What's right, let's meet a prioritize. And then kind of looking and going, okay, you know, I mean, it's just a discussion. Nothing's decided because it can be before. And then we come back, yes, we tell.
Work meeting informs the board on what we've done.
Right.
I guess I trust you guys have done the work and things.
Right.
If if something needs to be passed without meeting, then.
Right.
Hopefully we do that.
Yeah, and it's just working together and kind of going over things. And a lot of it's Denny kind of going, hey, guys, this happened. Or, you know, we just kind of talk about things that are happening with the facilities. And then we bring that back to the board and discussions or decisions are made or if we need to be here.
Okay, the last item there is determined. This has been brought up before, facility assessment. We need to have another one. If so.
What was the price to be on that on the last one? Or how much was the last one?
I don't know what the what it would cost. Have you guys been excited to have Brian or?
Two years old. It's two years old.
Yeah, I don't think this is meant for me, but I'm guessing you're. I know they were relatively inexpensive on facilities days, so I'm probably looking at, as it's just the one building, I'm assuming that you would want that detailed look at it. I could be, I mean, I can give you names of companies that do it.
Well, then again, should we wait till you meet with your, we meet with the progressive people and if they think.
I think that'd be a good idea.
Then go from there.
Then we can decide in that amount of time. And you can look at what's on our website as far as facilities and what's allocated all there. And I think talking with Denny at the committee can get together and I've talked with Denny. I think he can give you a pretty good assessment of what the needs are. So I think, yeah, let's let's keep that on the table. And then let's get the committee started meeting and then getting organized with that. And then we'll move forward with the other districts. We've got that on slated for the calendar and.
Well, and I think you want to wait too, because really, do you want to pay for an assessment? If we as the community, community says, we just want to leave 99, I mean, we have all these options, right? Do you want to take fifteen thousand dollars to have this building assessed? When you decide that's not what you want to go with? Because that's a lot of money.
Remember, I don't know if this is, again, it's been years now, but an assessment cannot be looked at as a plan, right? This is a condition and it's broken, so fix it. And even the nuance within that, you can't say, I just cherry pick all these things out of the assessment and fix it. It's going to be this whole. There are potentially going to be other things that are tied, fixing each of those things that aren't.
Use your big girl voice. We can't hear you.
Here's your big girl.
Oh, I never, okay. But yeah, so it's, you know, just if you're paying for assessment, that's what you're going to get with this test.
Right, how often do these school districts go?
Well, I was I was going to, I was going to add, Jamie's talking about facility, so districts, the way that we work with. The facilities committee is the committee that gets together monthly, if not every other month. But what's required for the district, you heard this earlier before, is to submit an LTFM long-term facilities maintenance plan. That has to be submitted every year. Districts often confuse that as being the IEA health and safety report. Long-term facility maintenance plan. It's part of it. But there is everything outside of the health and safety stuff. So IEA does a good job of looking at where you discuss the situation. materials, OSHA compliance, all those things. That's what they analyze. They do not look at carpet, ceiling tile, electrical systems. So there's a big section of that plan that's supposed to be submitted every year to the MBE to say, here's all the needs that we have for the next ten years. And it's updated every year and submitted. It's approved by the board typically in June because it has to be submitted by the end of July to the MBE. So that's kind of kind of the groundwork, the foundation for facility committee in my eyes is we've got the LTFM plan that we have to submit every year. So we're analyzing, here's our most highest priority needs that we got to get. And you know, your revenue is whatever it is, you can spend up to Lindsay two hundred and some thousand dollars. What are the projects? We're telling MBE that we're going to fix next year for that amount of money. I think you project out two, three, four, five out of ten. So it gets more of a, you know, kind of dart that year ten as opposed to exact the year one. But that's kind of where the facility committee should kind of focus around is completing that ten-year plan every year.
And it's figured on age of building and per pupil student.
The revenue?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's that's an easy way to put it, but of course, so.
How much does it go up every year for the age of the building? Or is it fiscal, like every five years and then a function?
It it, the cap is three hundred and eighty dollars per student. So and I believe you guys would, the modest guarantee you have in the age of your buildings, it's going to be three hundred and eighty times enrollment. It's going to be pretty close to what what your what your revenue. And I don't know yet. I I think your parking lot is utilizing some of those funds to pay the payments to the parking lot. So Lindsay might have a better grasp on how that money is working and when that's paid off and then that frees some money up. I also don't know, and I I don't hope MBE's not watching tonight, but when when the closure of Rhode Island takes place, how that affects the formula, who lets them know that that's no longer a school? So therefore shouldn't be in the calculation. Again, I think even with that gone, the size of the building you have, the age of the building that you have and the student enrollment, you're still going to max out. But you're you're going by just this size of building, not plus Rhode Island. So you're losing, you know, that almost. So I don't know if that would factor in a whole bunch or not in your in your total revenue. I don't know if anybody at MBE is paying attention to that and.
So they don't. How much does it go by per square foot then?
No, it's it's by.
It's figured in that three eighty for the.
Right, so that's agent's work footage.
So that would probably back off a little bit depending on how much.
I don't, yeah, I mean, it 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 depends on if if this building still is old enough in in totality, it probably won't hurt you too bad. But you had a lot of old square footage over there, right? So I I'm guessing though, your average years of building, even in this building, you're probably going to be max.
But Lindsay.
So did did you answer my name? It's like, how often do they have, how often do we have the size of the LMF? ABC, CYT? Besides that, how often do we have, like, how often do districts usually have, like, people come in and do an assessment?
Oh, so, yeah, sorry, giving back to that. So we help districts put that together every year. I mean, that's just kind of what we do with a lot of districts, we have a lot of termination equipment, we just we just do that. So we're constantly assessing the facilities kind of on a annual basis. But outside that, I think LTFM revenue allows you some components of an assessment to be completed every five years. And then you can use your LTFM revenue to pay for that service. But I would say five years, you know, is probably prudent. Depends on how many facilities you have, how big they are, all that stuff, right? You have one building. You have, you know, at this point, I I don't know. I'm biased that I would really worry about doing another assessment. You know, you need a lot of work. So until you do a lot of work, probably it probably doesn't pay to get another assessment done. Again, you know, take take where I'm standing, if they're going to solve it. You're going to get an assessment to come back and see if the money does work, even if it's half of what I said. Right? So that's not going to tell you. Here's, here's your priorities. They're going to say, here's what our priorities, just like our list shows what our priorities were in this building. The district, Denny, you might have different priorities. It might be more important to change carpet or flooring than it is to, you know, it's a, I don't know, in depth, I I'm sorry, bad example, but you know what I'm saying? So it's for you guys, I would say you're just going to continue this stuff, right? But you can do that at this point. If you have enough information, even if you went back to the, yes, time assessment, in fact, I think that was two thousand fourteen-ish. I think just, I don't think you, you know, another five years, five years on.
Well, I think, you know, you, we put that together every year and Denny is working with those numbers and buildings on a daily basis. So he's a, he's a good resource for us administratively, sitting down with Denny on a regular basis. I think with your committee, you'd want him to be a meaningful part of that. And you'll be going by his advice. And then when you you've got a project coming, then you would think, oops, we need to get somebody into an engineer or somebody to put a real professional on together, program together for, then you wouldn't go with an assessment. But but I think right now, I don't, you know, I think it isn't going to take much to put together one or two million dollars to fix it if you're going to do it. So you, Denny, needs a prioritize. We need to do this now because of it. And 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 that's what the, what you will put together working with him. So I think you put a lot of trust in Denny. I think he's a, he's well versed with a lot of facilities, things. You know, I've seen him analyze, problem solve so many things in these buildings that I am amazed. So he's got a good background for that. So so I trust what he is telling us is what we need to, and watching him and Lindsay working on the numbers today. It's a lot to, we're going to put together with with Lindsay. So I think we can do that. I I don't know if you want to spend the money on an outside assessment at this point. I think you know, you've got it, what is good for us now. And then you determine, you know, what direction you're going to go. Are you going to spend your focus on here? You're going to put your focus on out at the hospital? Or is there another plan? And so I think we, I think those are the three things we need to take a look at then and then move with that. So I'm thinking right now, I would like to get the the facilities committee together first as soon as we can. And I'm looking at next Monday, but I think Brian, that's a big.
He actually, he dropped off just because he was trying to get back. Oh, no. I thought I was trying to get back in.
So I mean, we could do that, but I I'm thinking Monday, Lindsay's here. And that would be a good time for us to meet, especially being the first time getting together and then I would have Denny and.
Are you thinking during the day?
Personally, if we could. But I don't know what your schedule is. You got to tell me what your schedule is.
I'm, I can make that. I can make it work. Dylan and Brian.
Yeah.
Usually Thursday morning is best for him or Tuesday afternoon.
I'm thinking to start with, I want Lindsay there.
That's fine.
So that's what I'm looking at Monday. Teresa, are you someone open day or?
That happens to be a good day during the day for me.
Okay, what about late afternoon? That would work better for Brian, try to get a time when Brian can connect with us.
You'll have to check with Brian, but.
The three of us can, we can try and put together a date and time. Let's look at that Monday.
The eighth possibly?
Yeah.
I'll put that tentative.
Yeah, afternoon's better. I have a testing training in the morning, so I prefer afternoon.
I was going to have Brian give a closing remarks, but because I can't. Well, I got a quick question. Okay, the previous referendum, that was supposed to be basically our thoughts were, a lot of that was I thought we're supposed to go for maintenance. What did we do with that for maintenance? Or was that just operating and we just used it to operate? Or was that just operating, and we just used it to operate? All right, I think we. We've come a long way today, so thank you all for for coming and discussing, and and we have one discussing as well. We'll have one meeting. Thank you very much.
Okay, well, thank you, well.